It's seven o'clock.
Yes ma'am.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Tiverton Town Council, regular meeting, Monday, June 8th. Do I have our flag bearer?
Uh oh.
Uh oh. My, our flag bearer seems to be missing.
Uh, hold on one second, I can, I can get, oh, here he is.
Guys, I'm here.
Okay, excellent. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Madam Clerk, would you like to take the role, please?
Aren't we all supposed to stand for that?
Now, I think so, but you all sort of disappeared off the screen, which is a little complicated.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiris.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
All present.
All right. So we'll start with the consent agenda. Item A, approval of town council minutes, May 26th, regular meeting. Item B, acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions, and committees. Two sets from the Board of Canvassers and one set from the Recreation and Beach Commission. Item C, acknowledged receipt of reports. One item from the Planning Board, report of activities to the Planning Department and Planning Board, May 2020. Item D, acknowledged receipt of correspondence. City of Woonsocket Resolution Recognizing the Month of June as Woonsocket Pride Month. And item E, approval of tax assessor abatements. Would anybody like to remove an item from the consent agenda? John?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
In that case, Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Moving on to public comments, there's actually quite a few here. Two of them I'm going to read and the other, I'll summarize for you. We do have a letter from Lisa Labuti. As a resident of Tiverton, can you tell me if you will be limiting the number of people at the town beaches due to COVID-19? Also, will non-residents be admitted if you are limiting the numbers allowed into the beach? I don't know if Chris could answer that?
The answer is yes, we are going to limit them based on the state guidance on the square footage of the beach. And it will be, it will depend upon the number of heads that actually come to the beach. But it will only be on those dates that they have a lifeguard and a as far as out of state, it is first come, first served. It's, we do not limit out-of-state people to the beaches.
Denise?
Chris, are we going to put up the sales structure and empty the restrooms? Because the restrooms aren't able to be used right now because all of this stuff is in there.
We didn't, we didn't open grenelle seats this week and we wanted to try one because they need to pull some of the benches and they are going to put the sails up and the bathrooms, the grenelles will be open. And we do have staff on, available.
Denise?
You're muted, Denise.
You're muted, Denise.
When are you planning on putting the sales structure up?
It's going to be coming out this week, the next couple of days.
All right, thank you.
We then have a comment from Caesar Relvas. I reside in Tiverton and have used the north side cove, opposite side of the town beach, to launch my small boat to go fishing early in the morning for more than 30 years. Not sure why its access is now denied to me and others. The governor clearly stated that going fishing and similar activities do not constitute a violation of social distancing rules. It seems to me that the council is trying to restrict and limit public access to coastline areas only to the elites that live near these areas. They have tried hard in the past to block us from accessing the cove and it seems to me that now they are using the COVID situation as fuel to block us all and keep access just to themselves. How unfair is this action? Please advise and we'll also be contacting the State Department of Environmental Management and the governors. This is wrong.
Who was this from?
Caesar Relvas.
I don't seem to have, I don't think I have that one.
It was in the list that Jeannie sent. I, I'm not sure which access point he's talking about.
I don't have that one.
I can, I can explain it. I don't know if I have the actual letter.
It's on the last page, Nancy.
So we've received a number of complaints, similar complaints about this. It is the north end of Fogland area. There's a small beachhead area to the, on the north side of the beach. And there are, there are times where a number of cars have been parked up on that beachhead. And it falls within the guidelines of beaches for us to have to monitor it and we don't have the staff to monitor it. We've got our hands full just with the beach alone. But the issue of the dinghies has come around from a number of different people. But we do have a boat ramp there available in the area and they're more than welcome to, you know, I know they don't like this, but it's you know, it's, we just don't have the staff to monitor it, but they can't get their little dinghies over to that area. They just have to walk them over. We're just not allowing them to park up in that area because there is social distancing issues on that beachhead.
Thank you, Chris. Then we received a number of emails regarding the test site that CRMC is permitting or potentially permitting on Nana Quocket Pond. I'm not going to read all of them. They're all in opposition. And honestly, because our public comment mailbox at town hall, it's only one. I believe that the Harbor Commission, before they took this up, had these, but just so that everybody's aware, I won't read the details of every single one of them. I will tell you, they are all in opposition to an oyster farm on Nana Quocket Pond. And a number of them also raised concerns about the Zoom meeting and whether or not their input would be considered. So those opposed include Liz and Tom Colbert at 430 Nana Quocket Road, Brian LaComte, Lori Wood, Ryan Parks, 482 Nana Quocket Road, Rebecca Majewski, Vincent Majewski, Carolyn David Ahern to 10 Nana Quocket Road, Lori Wessel, Mike Scheffler of North Court, Claire Schoenfeld, 404 Nana Quocket Road, Deb Hagan at 540 Nana Quocket Road, Tom Flaherty at 404 Nana Quocket Road, and Celine McGribby, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, of North Court. I do believe that most of these did go to the Harbor Commission. And I, I do understand that the Harbor Commission did take this up. And after quite a discussion, they voted not to recommend a test site by CRMC for an oyster farm on Nana Quocket Pond. I don't have a lot more information than that, other than they will be notifying CRMC that they are in opposition. Chris, did you want to say something?
No, there are a number of names that you mentioned that were actually at that meeting, but there are a number that weren't. Last name Parks, Ahern, Wessel, Sepley, Flaherty, and Schoenfeld. They were not at the meeting because I did take extensive notes there, or if they were, they did not speak. But just so that everybody knows what's going to happen, because it was more than just a Nana Quocket Pond issue, there was also one site that was on the Scott River, but it was in the middle of a mooring field. So some people had concerns about the mooring field as well. The Harbor Commission did a very good job. They heard from everybody. They read everybody's letter. And they will forward that count, that, all of that discussion to CRMC. There was actually a member of CRMC at present at that meeting. And from what we understood from the member from CRMC is it will go to a full commission hearing in either late August or early September. But there were, there were a couple of other sites too. There was also the site down by Sappawatt. The one on the Scott River and the one in Nana Quocket Pond. And they were all objectionable for certain reasons. And those comments were made, allayed to CRMC for their particular hearing. The one in the pond, Nana Quocket, and the one in the mooring field were test sites that do not require any, other than notification to the Harbor Commission. They, they can administratively perform those and allow them. But I think with the volume of information that they had heard from at that hearing, that they will, in all likelihood, be denied. But because it will be a full CRMC hearing, commission hearing, it's not just a subcommittee. It will go before the full commission. I would suggest for anybody who has a concern about it to continue watching the CRMC website. It's a very good, updated website that will have these particular issues. And when the hearing will come available and when we get notice of it, we will put it on our website as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. So that brings us to public hearings. Item A, approval of proposed amendment to the resolution for fees and fines relating to compost bins, which, as I understand, we get the compost bins from the Rhode Island Resource Recovery. And they've slightly increased the fee that they are charging us. And my understanding is we don't make any profit on these. It's purely a pass-through, whatever our I, RRC charges us is what we charge. And so there's a request to increase the price of a compost bin to $45.
That's correct. And I have Rick Rogers on the, on the meeting as well. He could speak to it. But I think what we're looking for is the approval to increase those fees whenever necessary, not to exceed whatever D E M charges us for those bins.
Yes. And what Trish said is obviously correct. And DPW would like authority to whatever Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation charges us that we're allowed to charge to the public if they pick those up. And currently, as Trish mentioned, it's $45 now. It used to be 40.
So are there any questions or comments before I open the public hearing? Denise?
You're muted.
Yeah, I know. So Rick, you want us to approve the 45? Or do you want us to approve to reflect the cost to the town charged by RI, RRC?
Yes, Denise. DPW would like approval to charge the public, the residents of town, whatever Rhode Island Resource charges DPW.
All right, because if we, okay, the 45, then every time they change their fee, you're going to have to come back to us.
Yes, we would prefer, we would prefer to have it that we just have permission to charge a pass-through, whatever they charge us. So we would prefer it that way versus a set amount such as $45.
All right, thank you.
Okay, since it's a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this?
There are five people in the waiting room. If anybody in the waiting room wants to speak on this matter, just raise your hand. This is a public hearing on fees for compost bins. Anybody in the waiting room who wants to speak on it?
Recycle bins.
Please, recycle bins. That's right, recycle bins. I'm sorry.
No, compost bins.
Oh, they are compost bins.
They're compost bins?
Yeah, they're compost bins, the ones.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's.
Oh, okay.
Compost bins.
Okay, I stand corrected. I thought it was a recycling bin.
So I'll ask one more time. If there's anybody in the waiting room that would like to speak on the increase of compost bins to reflect what Rhode Island Resource Recovery charges the town, please raise your hand. There is none.
And Madam, Madam Clerk, can you just confirm that there was no public comment written received for this, on this item, correct?
No, there was no public comment received.
If a minute could reflect that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Denise?
That's okay. I was going to make a motion.
Well, I've closed the public hearing if you'd like to.
I'd like to make a motion to approve to charge the compost bin to reflect the cost to the town charged by Rhode Island RRC.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Counselor DiMedeiris?
That's it.
No, I'm asking if you want to vote.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs? Nancy?
You're muted, you're muted. You're muted, Nancy.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Perry? Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right.
Just, just to remind it to the, to the members, I'm sorry. If everyone just remains muted and when you just want to speak, if you just hit your spacebar, it's, it gets rid of a lot of background noise. We're getting some interference, so that's the best way to do it. So mute yourself and then if you want to speak, just press your spacebar. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to appointments and resignations. We have a resignation of Planning Board Member Paul Amaral effective July 15th, 2020. Denise? You have to unmute yourself. Denise?
Yeah, Mike, I have to tell you that the spacebar does not work for me.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'm actually muting myself because everyone's saying that I have background noise. That's
I don't know who has it, but there is a background noise.
It's our microphone.
Yeah, I don't know why. All right, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Planning Board Member Paul Amaral effective July 15th, 2020. Thank him for his multiple service here in the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. So Counselor DiMedeiris?
I, I just want to say something.
Oh, go ahead, Donna.
It's, it's, I don't know, it's a resignation. He's just not seeking reappointment. Which, he's, he's served his whole term. He's going to serve his whole term. He's not, just not going to be
He is not asking for reappointment. I, exactly, although in the past, historically, some people who aren't seeking reappointment, simply don't send an application in. They don't, you know, they, they don't do anything. Some people are, you know, do take the time to write a short note, which Mr. Amaral did, so I'll defer to the solicitor, but in the past, we've accepted these with a, with a vote and our thanks.
That's fine.
But I think Donna's point was that it's not a resignation.
And I just ran into him today and he was asking why it was a resignation. I said, I don't know.
It, it's just, it's just how we, it's just how it's printed on the agenda, but it's, you're right. It's that, that his term is up and he's asking not to be reappointed.
I know. He says, anyway, it looks like he's not going to fill his term and he's, he's resigning before it's done. It, it's just, I know it's, it, it's not right. He's finishing his term. He's just not
I, I'm, I'm not sure. We'll have to ask Madam Clerk.
I don't know.
He actually put the date July 15th, so people would realize that it's the end of his term. He was gracious enough to do this now, which is helpful to the town because I was able to get an advertisement out. This is an important position and we want to try to fill it as soon as we can. So
Nancy, you're saying that he did?
It says resignation is just a, for Malley, we do it for all of them. But we can put there not seeking, but I don't know why I'd put that on an agenda, but
Well, before we spend too much time on this, unless the solicitor objects, maybe we could just sort of vote to move, continue forward with our vote and thank Mr. Amaral for his many years of service?
I have no objection.
Okay. So I think Denise, you're a yes? Denise? John?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
He's not resigning. We're thanking him.
Okay. Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. And then on the Recreation Commission, which is a
Sorry, can we go to Denise? Because I don't think she was heard verbally. Denise? I know it was a yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise.
I read your lips, Denise, but we didn't hear you.
So we're going to move on to the Recreation Commission, which is a seven-member board, three-year terms. There's one vacancy. And Edward 70 requests reappointment for a term to expire 4/15/2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. Ed 70 of Merritt Avenue until April 15th, 2023.
So I'll, I'll second that, but I think we have to motion and move our policy first, right?
Yes.
Yes. So so there's a motion and a second for the appointment. Is there a motion to amend our policy to simply reappoint?
No, moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry? Joe?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So now on to the reappointment motion. There's a motion and a second. If there are no questions, are we ready to go to a vote? In that case, Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs? Nancy?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Perry? Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, the next item that we have on the agenda is sitting as an advertised board of license, Grandswell Bakery and Cafe LLC, 3883 Main Road, request approval for a BVL liquor license subject to meeting all legal requirements. But Madam Clerk, I did hear this, that there's a request to continue this?
Yes, I received an email this afternoon at 3:00 asking if they could continue this to the next town council meeting so that they wouldn't have to re-advertise and re-notice the butters. While they work out some issues that aren't complete yet.
And I, I do have two public comments on this, but I'm going to ask the solicitor, I should hold those till we get to the, just have those move forward with the continuance?
Yeah, I would, yes, assuming the, if the council grants the continuance, which I would recommend they do, yes. And then just, we would, we should give them notice as well.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, if we do that, can you make sure that the, that those two, that those two pieces of correspondence and, and as well as notifying them?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, Chris?
Oh, the solicitor, does that go for the comments for people in the waiting room as well? That, that would wait till the next meeting.
I'm going to, we're not actually going to have a public hearing if the council decides to give, grant the continuance.
So anybody in the waiting room, if they have comment, they should wait till the next meeting, is basically
Exactly. Well, yes, I'm assuming that the council will grant the continuance, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
So since the continuance is at the request of the applicant, do I have a motion to continue this? Did they ask for a specific date, Nancy?
The email states to the next town council meeting.
Okay, so
What date would that be?
22nd June 2023.
So is there a motion to continue this then? Nancy, were you saying something?
I said I moved.
Okay.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Counselor DiMedeiris?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry? Joe?
Yes.
Counselor
Yes.
I, thank you, Joe. Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So this will be continued to our next meeting. General business, Counselors Cook and Driggs, resolution establishing the Municipal Facilities Maintenance Committee discussion and possible vote. So I will turn this over to Donna and Nancy.
Okay, I attached also the original agenda request so that there was some history to it because I was asked to submit it in this type of form as a resolution. So I'll read it and I guess this is the way you start a committee and, okay.
Well, Donna, I don't, is this included in the backup? I'm not sure if you need to read the whole thing, but do you want to just give us the sort of highlights?
Well, I had to do the purpose. I had to do the setup of what the committee was going to look like. I, I had pretty much what's in it was in the original why we were going to have the municipal, you know, wanted to, you know, entertain the thought of having a Municipal Facilities Maintenance Committee because the building, buildings repairs were not being tracked and, no, I think we could use the public to help us with that. There seemed to be a lot of people that were interested in it. So to do that, you needed to set up, set up the whole committee, how it was going, the purpose of it, how it was going to carry out its duties, the membership, and who to report to. And it was also part of the Access to Public Records Act. So I did all that. And actually, Nancy, Nancy Mello was very helpful, giving me some background information for previous committees. And I was able to put this together. Thank you, Nancy. So I'm asking that the town council approve this committee. I think it would be good for the town. I think there's a lot of, there's people out there that are very interested in maintaining the buildings and tracking what needs to be done. I worded it in a way that if repairs or maintenance that are in the FTR approved capital expense budget during the town's fiscal budget year, date of completions of repairs, and it's understood if the committee's new recommendations are not included for the new year, the FTR fiscal budget, the list is to be rolled over until the repair is approved for the FTR capital expenses included. I didn't want it to get lost in the weeds. That's why I wanted to make sure that it was then at the top of the list for the pre, next year to get some money for the FTR to fix it.
Counselor DiMedeiris?
I don't know. I don't have any backup to this at all.
Do you, do you have the request to be placed on the agenda in your packet?
I just have, no, I don't even have that.
9A?
Nope.
Joe?
I don't have 9A at all. I'm, I'm looking. That's what I've been doing.
Okay.
Forgot to give me that, but that's okay.
Can anyone send it to her?
Well, maybe if I go on
It would have been in your scanned backup as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe if I go on my scanned. I'm not looking at my scanned.
In the meantime, while Denise is looking for her copy, does anyone else have any comments or questions?
It's, just so Denise knows on the scan, it's on page 47 of Backup 1 of 2.
Thank you.
On the PDF.
Okay.
I do have a, Madam President, I do have a question.
Go ahead, John.
So Counselors Cook and Driggs, if I'm reading this correctly, the purpose of this committee is essentially to be a, like a building maintenance like a building maintenance oversight, um, it, it doesn't seem like they would look at, you know, putting forward, you know, uh, like, like a study or anything on whether or not we should continue to maintain buildings, it looks like it's more confined to just what maintenance we're doing on existing town-owned structures. And I'm concerned there, uh, primarily because we do have some aging facilities and, you know, I think when we look at the life of the police station, you know, while I think my grandfather did a fantastic job building it, that was like sixty years ago, and, you know, it might be time for us to, to look at what the future that holds, and whether or not it makes more sense for us to invest dollars in the aging facility, or start thinking about a plan to replace the facility, so, am I, am I thinking about that correctly? This is just to maintain existing structures, but not to look at future buildings' needs?
Um, what I, what I, what I have here is, in, uh, carrying out its purpose, and, and of course, um, this can be, th- this is to look at, if you, you want something amended or something added, it's, it's a, uh, a, a, a document that's, uh, that can be, you know, added to or subtracted from. Uh, study and document the structural status of each municipal building facility yearly. Continue to follow up and track approved repairs and our maintenance, giving quarterly updates to the town council and town administrator, setting forth its achievements, projects, and goals. Prepare recommendations, report to be presented to town council, town administrator on the following new municipal building repairs and our maintenance needed, anticipated costs during the months of November to December before January first of the new year. Um, I mean, anything can be added in here if you want them to be tracking, if buildings need to be replaced, or, I mean, whatever you wanna add.
I, I just wanna make sure I have the intent of what this was correctly understood.
Yeah.
I would think definitely under the purpose, John, um, that this, under A, purpose one A, the structural status of each municipal building yearly, and, obviously, if the conclusion is we need a new building, that would be part of that, I would think.
Anyone else, Denise?
Um, did we, um, my memory, I'm trying to think of my memory, didn't we hire, um, professional people to do this a few years ago?
We did.
All right, and, um, we do have that, their recommendations, but we couldn't do anything about it, because quite frankly, we couldn't afford it. So, um, we, we do have, um, architectures, I think it was an architect firm, uh, that went around and looked at all our facilities and they made recommendations, but we haven't really addressed those recommendations.
Well, um, if I, oh Denise, are you still talking? I don't know if she's turned off. Um, I just think this is a, uh, a more affordable way to do it than have an architectural firm, if we have, if we, if it is understood that through the looking at structural statuses by the people, that they need more, because you have the building inspector involved, the town administrator, and a member of the town council as a liaison, that, um, then there would be a next step as far as a study on if the building needs to be replaced. That would be a whole other step.
Denise?
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, I think, I don't, maybe we could get a copy of that study, but there was a study done, with, um, I, I think they did recommend that the police station need to, needs to be replaced, if I remember.
Yeah, well, we can get a metal building for that.
The DPW was the big concern too, but, I mean, I think we need a copy of that. I just have a problem with laypeople, um, coming on and giving their opinions, um, and I think that we already did a study, and maybe we should examine that study before we go for, forward.
John?
So, I think, uh, one of the points that Council DiMaderis made, I think is a good one, that, you know, we should have, if we're gonna create something like this, I think there needs to be membership requirements, so, somebody who's in, you know, the building trades, who's, you know, a structural engineer, who's a, you know, licensed architect, I think, i- in this, my, my personal opinion stands for all of the, you know, for most of the committees that have a specialized focus, you know, for instance, like the police pension fund, you know, we should have people who orbit this industry that are giving advice, rather than just anybody off the street. Um, you know, I think that the learning curve, when it comes to examining, examining structural integrity for buildings, is probably pretty high. I know I certainly couldn't do it. Um, and so, you know, I think that i- if we do go forward with any of this, we need to spell out some specific requirements around, you know, what types of, of individuals from the public we are looking to recruit for this committee, uh, before we open it up to, to anybody else.
Anyone else have a comment? So, I will say, I, I'm a little, oh, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the committee is a good idea, and to John's point, uh, if, um, the people in that committee may or may not have the expertise to, uh, you know, make decisions or to, uh, identify issues. Um, but this committee could still, um, you know, go, you know, turn to a professional to get, uh, the information they need. It was mentioned that a study was done a couple of years ago, but, as we all know, in a couple of years, things can change, depending, especially depending on what things were addressed and which things were allowed to let go. And, you know, that's gonna be a dynamic situation, where every year, new things are gonna pop up. So, I don't think the people on this committee have to be experts, but they do have to coordinate the efforts of experts, and call them in once a year, or every two years, whatever you think is appropriate, and, uh, you know, get the right people in, have them take a look, get their reports, uh, review the reports, make their recommendations at the town council, or, or, so, you know, I, I think that, uh, it could be a good, uh, a good thing to do, and I think that, uh, you know, we, the people don't have to be experts.
Um, so, Nancy, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what Steve said, I don't think the intent here is to have this volunteer committee be the last word. I think it's more a sort of a watchdog of people who know about construction, know about, can look at things and understand what they're looking at, and then, and they report to the town council and to the town administrator, and at that point, if we need more experts to come in to talk about what kind of, what, what we're looking at here, that's a separate question, but I think it's a good idea.
So, I, I will say that, I think that, um, I think that this committee is a little bit of a mixed, uh, uh, mission. The municipal feasibility, uh, committee that we had, or, in the past, they didn't have anything to do with looking at day-to-day maintenance of the buildings and deciding that, you know, the roof should be repaired here, or there should be new shingles. That, that committee was put together specifically to go and look at every town building that we owned, and determine whether or not we still needed the building, in other words, and I believe they made rec- some recommendations. Um, for example, that's how Nonquid School ended up being, getting sold, right? Um, a- as well as, you know, eventually Ranger School and the former, um, I don't know what it's called, the building that we had on Judson Street. So, they actually looked at whether or not there was a use for the buildings that we had, and then they looked at the, uh, capacity and requirements of the existing buildings to determine whether or not those buildings, uh, would continue to suit the town for a period of time, whether or not they might need additional space, or whether or not we should consider putting away money to eventually replace the buildings. So that was really not a maintenance committee at all, that was, they were very much focused on, uh, the structures that we had, and whether or not we'd outgrown them, uh, did we have a use for them? A- and that's a whole separate mission, uh, that's completely separate. As far as the, a maintenance committee goes, I have to say that I, I, I'm not really for that, and I, I say it because we have a town administrator, and we have a building official, who's a licensed Rhode Island building official. And then we have, you know, various department heads who work in those buildings, day in, day out, they know what works in the buildings, they know what doesn't work in the buildings. And, um, and then you, you've got the maintenance staff, so I think that we have plenty of input from, you know, our own internal staff as to what needs to be repaired. I do agree that there may be times that you may need to bring in someone from the outside, whether it's a structural engineer, or a civil engineer, or, you know, whatever it is. But I think at that point, you're better off actually spending a little bit of money to hire a professional, who's going to put their name on a piece of paper, right, and who's licensed, as opposed to a, you know, well-intentioned volunteer committee of people who may have some contracting experience, but, you know, i- it's one thing to, to say, you know, gee, I've been a contractor and I've worked on additions on houses, that's a whole different thing than, uh, evaluating the, the structural soundness and maintenance needs of the kinds of commercial buildings that we have. So, I, I, I just think that, um, this is something that we should be able to do in, in-house, and I'm afraid that, you know, a committee really i- is, uh, not gonna be that, all that helpful. And I know that Chris has his hand up, so does Denise, and so does John, so I'll get to everybody.
I got my hand up, but you can't see it.
Oh, and Donna too. Denise?
Um, I, I just wanna say that I agree with what Trish just had to say, um, that's about all I, that's what I wanna say. I, everything that Trish just said, I agree with, I think that, um, the people that work in these buildings every day, our building inspector, our town administrator, I think, um, and then if they feel that they need expert advice, well, then we can go forward with that.
Okay. Uh, John?
So, I, you know, I agree with what you said as well, um, you know, I, I think that it would be worthwhile for us to establish a committee to look at the feasibility of our buil- our buildings, um, and go through that process again. What, the other thing that concerns me here is on the membership, is that, you know, it seems like the building inspector and the administrator are already doing these things, and if we throw a committee in the mix, you know, now there becomes bureaucracy, slows the process down, and when it comes to, hey, we need to replace a patch of shingles on the senior center roof, I don't necessarily think that a committee needs to meet in order to determine what type of shingles we put on that. Um, so, you know, I, I, I would love to see us do another feasibility study and get some people who, you know, have background in commercial construction that understand these things, be the targeted membership, um, and then also have an expert, you know, an expiration onset committee, uh, rather than something that's going to continue teams ad infinitum, uh, based on the way this was structured.
All right. Uh, Donna?
All right, well, um, I've, I listened to everything you have to say, but the real reason this was put together was that, uh, maintenance was not being done. It was being, uh, not finished, or the monies weren't being spent, and it was found that, you know, roofs weren't repaired, and the money was still in there, and, uh, it wasn't being tracked. So, that was a big problem, so it was getting sort of lost in the weeds, and then you'd find out that, you know, it wasn't done. So that's, that's why, uh, this was, uh, put together, uh, if-
Well, Donna, I, I respectfully disagree with you on that. Uh, there were a couple of members of the general public who, who seemed to think that. Um, however, when you actually looked at the schedule and the timeline, um, the, you know, as, I think a couple of months ago, there were, you know, sort of big complaints that the senior center, well, the senior center's all done. Um, that's all been completed as scheduled, so, and, you know, there was a year that, that somebody was adamant that the senior center roof should have been done, and it, in fact, wasn't, and it was never in the budget that year. So, I think that this is one of the risks that here is that, uh, you know, that there are folks who don't necessarily know the schedule and the direction. So, I'm gonna go to Chris next, 'cause he's in line, and then back to Denise. And then, um, I think we should either maybe consider a motion, uh, to go forward from there or not. Chris?
So, all very good comments, all things that really need to be addressed as it relates to these buildings, and I do agree that between the building official, the administrator, and the department heads, we should be taking a look at these things and prioritizing them. But I would also highly suggest that anything that has a significant dollar amount, we also bring our insurer out to make sure that we have whatever risk issues as it relates to the town's liability, that we should be looking at that as well. I'll make mention of the fact that the recreation equipment that we're about to buy, they did make, I did speak to them today. Um, I know we're not anywhere near buying anything yet, but we wanna make sure that we follow the right guidance and the right, um, um, strict guidance that as it relates to the, what the engineer for these things. They made mention the fact that the structures that we had there before created a huge liability for the town, because they weren't in accordance with what the systems were. So I would, you know, bring that to the table as well. Um, but I do think that the town has done a very good job trying to maintain what it has with the limited budgets that they have. And this year, to go to Donna's point, I mean, we just got through deferring a lot of capital because of our financial situation, so there will be times that that does happen, um, but I think you really need to put the onus on the administrator and your department heads, along with the building official, to help us get to the right place.
Um, Denise, did you wanna say anything?
Yeah, I just wanna say that, um, some of the things that were pointed out that we hadn't done this year was in the process of being done, and reasons why it was done later in the year. Um, somebody just put a comment, I don't know why I'm seeing this, but someone just put a comment that the reason why we did it is because this person got in a face, that's absolutely not true. Um, the roof on the senior center was a plan, and, uh, we did talk to the DPW director, it was planned for the spring, and it got it done. So I think there's a lot of chatter sometimes, and some of the things that they say, uh, is, is, is quite frankly false. So, um, I think there's been a lot of things that we've been accused of not completing, and sometimes it's because we're not funded for it, it's like Chris says, we have to, um, strike it because of other expenses, and just because we are getting to it by the end of the year, and when budget time comes, no, it's not completed yet. But, but we have until July first to complete it. So I think that a lot of this is just people who are dissatisfied and just accuse us of things, um, and then, then they do get done.
Okay. In that case, um, John, did you wanna say something, or I was gonna ask if somebody wanted to make a motion?
I just, I have a suggestion, um, based on the discussion. So, bas- based on what we, we talked about, it seems like there's an obvious communication problem here, that members of the public are not privy to some of the things that their tax dollars are going towards, and perhaps we could solve, you know, both of these issues, and, and avoid having to create a sta- create a standing committee, simply by putting up a, a maintenance page on our website with all of the projects that we have coming up, you know, that were funded by the FTR, and then we just update their status. So, you know, for instance, if a roof needs to be redone, and it's in the budget to be done, what's the status? When are we gonna start work on this? And, and, you know, as long as we keep that updated and we keep the public informed, you know, ultimately, the buck stops with us as the council, um, you know, f- for whether or not these things get done, and so, I, I think we need to have better communication with, you know, with our admini- our administrator and visibility into what is being done and when, and I, I think if we just did that via the website, you know, that might, that might solve all, all of everybody's issues.
I think that's, I think that's a very good idea. Denise, and-
I'm gonna say the same thing, I think that's a really good suggestion, and to put a lot of this, uh, behind us, where people aren't complaining, they can see what the plan is and when it's planned to be done.
Okay, so is there a motion for, for this? Nancy?
I just wanna add one, one further thing, I, I think John's idea also is a good idea, and I think it could accomplish what this committee would do in the sense of, as long as not only is it just a report of what is scheduled to be done, but somebody has the access to also, as part of that report, suggest, do you, have you considered looking into this? And that's, you know, just sort of broadening the scope.
Add, add in a public comment feature on the website, and then just-
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so-
Madam President?
Madam-
President? Rick Rogers, DPW, may I say something?
Yes, Rick.
Yes, uh, to echo some of the opinions, the, there were a couple of members of the public who said the senior center roof was leaking, it was not. They also commented there was a hole in the senior center foundation, there was not, there was a chink out of it. Uh, and of course, the roof did get done, and the patch was made. And generally, the different departments do contact either the administrator, the building official, or DPW, and discuss different projects that need to be done. Uh, the maintenance foreman for DPW is in contact frequently with the different, uh, people who run the different buildings, and DPW does do the maintenance. And the money for the senior-
And the money for the senior center was spent. The town hall was not spent because there was a spending freeze when we were getting ready to do some of the work. The, the different, DPW's building was spent, in fact, a little bit over. So I do have to take exception to people saying that work was not done or budgeted and not taken care of. So there is a process in place. And they also commented about the library. The building official and myself have been to the library a few times and have gone over different kinds of work and discussed that with different people. So there is a process in place. There's always going to be members of the public who think it's not being done correctly, just like asphalting roads. They feel that their road should be done instead of someone else's. So I do say there is a process in place and there is communication. Certainly, communication can always be improved and website updates is, is a fine idea.
Okay.
Look at Roadworks.
All right. Yes. Mr. Solicitor, Mike? You're muted. Get your spacebar there.
Now my spacebar doesn't work, Denise. I just, just a word of warning, we're kind of far afield from the resolution. So the motion may be ordered to approve or whatever they want to do with resolution, but let's not get into other, other topics. So just let's stick to the issue at hand.
Thank you. So I don't know, is there anybody who chooses to make a motion on this or not?
Make a motion as one of the sponsors?
No, well, Donna has an agenda item with the, with the, so I'm.
The sponsor can move to approve. That's no problem.
I vote to approve Donna's, Donna's agenda item. I don't think it can hurt.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Discussion.
John? It's okay, but we've kind of, everybody's had more than one chance to speak. If it's urgent, yes, but Mike?
No, I just, I, we do this a little backwards. We usually have the discussion before we have the motion. We generally should have before the discussion, but that's just kind of how you guys do it. But, you know, but technically you should have the motion. And just because you make a motion doesn't mean you have to approve it. You can vote against it if you made the motion, but that usually puts it in play, you know, but I kind of like the tradition that you guys have, so I kind of keep my mouth shut. But anyway, we already had the discussion in my opinion as a parliamentarian, but Mr. Edwards wants to say something, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I'm going to vote against this just because I think it can all be solved with the website that communicates what's going on with the general public.
Well, I'll get to you in a second. You can vote. Councilor DiMedeiras? Can you turn your, turn your?
My spacebar's not working, Mike.
There you go. It's a no. Councilor Driggs? Councilor Perry? Council Perry? Joe?
No, no, no.
Joe's a no. Counselor Clark?
No.
Counselor Edwards?
No.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Okay. So moving right along, we've got some requested budget transfers. The first DPW Director Rogers requests approval of budget transfers. And I'm relatively sure these are all the sort of end of the year square up accounts kind of transfers. So there's a request from 55406451 snow removal to 55407325 highway signs for $1,710. A request for account 55406451 snow removal to 55307590 IT computer services for $1,020. And then account 55405104 overtime to 55305104 landfill overtime for $1,500. Denise?
I just have one, one question, Rick. B2, the computer services, we have already put quite a bit of money into computer services this year. And there's a big request for next year, which we don't even know if we can do. So what does this computer service entail?
Yes, it's 55407590. And that particular one was for the required upgrades to the time clock and fuel system by the IT service provider, His Time. And those are because the software was updated in the town to Windows 10 or whatever it was. And therefore, the old time clock system and the old fuel system became outdated and they needed to be upgraded.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Counselor Driggs?
Question on these transfers. And I don't know how to, I don't actually know how to phrase it, but on Agenda 9J on our item, there's kind of sort of where we are on the budget. And one of the items is snow removal, the budget savings of $25,000. So how do these transfers affect that budget saving item?
Chris, can you answer that?
I do not know if that $25,000 was before or after the snow removal for the 1710 and the 1020. There was and is a surplus in the snow removal, but exactly how much? I don't know. It would depend on whether that math was done before or after this request.
The math was done after. There should be still a residual amount beyond the 25.
Oh, so you're saying the 9J amount is after this request?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion? Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the account transfers as requested by the DPW director.
Is there a second?
Second.
Denise is the second. So we'll vote. Denise?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Steve Clark?
Yes.
Joe Perry? Joe?
Yes.
John Edwards?
Yes.
Donna Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
This is just B1, right?
That was just B, well, B1, 2, and 3.
Oh, okay.
That was all three of them at once.
Okay, okay.
And then Chief Jones requests. You're welcome. Police Jones requests approval of budget transfers from account 33306150 employee assistance to 33307199 medical testing for $2,300. And then account 33306928 education M&amp;R to 33307199 medical testing for $2,000. There, I don't know if Chief Jones is with us or if Chris does. And I'm wondering if the medical testing, is this related to COVID expenses?
No, it is not. No, this is a longstanding, outstanding bill that's been around. It's a HIPAA-related issue related to a officer-involved shooting.
Ah, okay. So this is really old.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as requested by Police Chief Jones.
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Unless there's any other questions, we'll vote. Counselor DiMedeiras?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Perry? Joe?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yeah.
Counselor Cook?
I, I'll vote yes, but that wasn't me voting yes. That was Counselor Perry.
And you're voting yes. And Counselor Cook, you voted yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes. Which brings us to item D, Town Administrator Review Discussion and Possible Vote for Extension of the Amnesty Trash Program, Allowing Each Resident to Put Out One Non-Town Trash Bag for Collection Each Week and Encouraging People to Continue to Put Out Recycling with Their Trash Continued from May 11th. So Chris?
So this is a program that the council had instituted while we were in the full throes of the COVID matters. And it was, it's very well received. It has been highly praised, and there is a number of people who like it to continue. My suggestion is, you know, take it to the end of the month, but if, whatever date that you do decide to end it, there needs to be some advance notice. Otherwise, we can't stop it tonight and expect it to start tomorrow that nobody's going to do it. So I know Director Rogers would also ask the same if we're going to, you know, stop this program. Give us some notice so we can get on the website and pick a specific date that you would like to end it. You know, amenable to any date that you want to pick. I just picked the end of the fiscal year because I thought it would be appropriate, but it's your decision as to what you want to do. I do know that you did want to review it every month. And we're just a little bit beyond the beginning of the month, so, you know, I wanted to get it before you so we can figure out what to do because we get a lot of calls about this.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the amnesty trash program until a definite end date of July 1st.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just.
Okay, John, I'll just stand up first and then I'll get to you, Donna. Go ahead, John.
I'll defer to Counselor Cook. She started talking before I raised my hands.
Okay, Donna?
No, I just wanted to know how much money is we're losing by doing this? Does anybody know what it adds up to?
We don't.
I don't know, but I will say this. As much as we've had this amnesty program, when I at least drive around town on trash days, and I do this myself, most of the people I see are still using the Tiberian maroon bags. I have really seen very few people doing trash amnesty. So I don't think it's been substantial because I just mostly see the maroon bags. Denise?
Yeah, the same thing with me. I barely ever see a white bag hanging. The reason why I said July 1st is somebody contacted me and said at the beginning of this, people bought white trash bags. And they, that there's, I don't know, they gave me an equation why there's still some left over. And they thought if we waited till July 1st, people could use the rest of the white trash bags that they bought. And I think that's reasonable. And also, anyone out there who wants to save those white trash bags, they can use them for Christmas time too. And that's what I told them too, because we do it at Christmas time. But I think it's reasonable to give a three-week notice. And anyone who did buy extra white trash bags can use them up.
Okay. So, John?
Yeah, thank you. I, the question I had, I guess, was more for the administrator as it pertains to, you know, what's going on with our budget process? Because I know we're ending the fiscal year, but we're not necessarily rolling into potentially a new budget. So is there any implication, any implications for us to cease this at the end of the fiscal year? And potentially still see an impact from, you know, the coronavirus and negatively impacting people through the beginning of the next fiscal year? Because ultimately, as, as other counselors have pointed out, it seems like the ones who take advantage of this program are likely the ones who need to use the program, and most other people are just using the regular bags.
Well, I keep in mind, keep in mind that if you qualify, if you income qualify, you can get free bags, right? So there's a, I think there are somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 or 300 families that receive a supply of free bags at the DPW every year. So there is a, you know, for those who really are in, you know, significant financial straits, there is a program for that.
I can't answer the question about how COVID would, you know, impact that because I'm not a foreseeer of how this is going to go. I will say that the majority of calls that we do get on this is probably related to low income or lack of income as it relates to the bags. So it has been a very good program for those people. And I know the new program will start in sometime in June, early July. I think we're done vetting all the potential customers for that. I, the only impact it's going to have is if anybody is what you would consider to be abusing it, we would be decreasing the life of the landfill. But I don't see that as an issue. I really don't.
Well, I guess the, the nature of my question was more, you know, I understand that we have programs for people who, you know, can demonstrate hardship, but, you know, what's beyond us, I mean, there is an element of pride that's associated with somebody and their income. And when you have to demonstrate, you know, fiscal hardship, it is a very revealing experience about yourself. So, you know, I think that, at least the benefit to this program is it, and it doesn't seem like there's why it's part of abuse, is that, you know, people are, they don't have to go through that rigmarole and that process. You know, I mean, there's, there's a little bit of, I guess, empathy that we're showing as, as a town to those people.
Right. Although, if you remember, part of the reason for doing this, John, was that people didn't want to go into stores. If you remember, it was early on in the COVID thing, you know, nobody wanted to go shopping or into any more stores than they absolutely had to. And the vendors weren't necessarily putting the bags out. And so part of this, part of it was a, part, a little bit of it was a financial thing, but as much as anything, it was that, that people really just didn't want to have to go to any extra stores to get bags. So I'm okay with it. Do we, remind me, we have a motion in a second on this one?
We do.
Okay. In that case, can we go to a vote? Counselor DiMedeiras? Turn your microphone on.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Driggs? Nancy? Oh, you have to turn your microphone on too.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, is it clear then we're going to continue it until July 1st and then we, then it ends?
Yes, it ends on July 1st. We go back to all maroon trash bags on July 1st.
Then I vote yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. So we should though try and publicize this as much as possible for the people who are doing that so that they know July 1st, it's, they've got to have all town trash bags.
So that's, that's, I want to clarify that because Denise's motion was to go to July 1st, so that'll be the question. Does it go July 1st at June 30th and you put bags out on July 1st?
I think for simplicity's sake, it should start July 1st. Like, I think that's easier for people to know.
Okay.
John?
So one question, and I know we did already vote on this and I probably should have raised it sooner, but I just looked at the calendar. July 1st falls on a Wednesday, so trash pickup on Thursday and Friday, those of us on the South End are other ones who are getting the short end of the stick.
I know, but we started it in the middle of a week too. And I just think July 1st is like, it's a, like, it's an easy date for people to remember and get out there. So, but we've also already voted. Okay.
Year.
Moving on, Town Planner Jennifer Siciliano requests authority to move forward with necessary steps for reviewing, rewriting, and codifying certain parts of the zoning ordinance as outlined in the memorandum. Is Jennifer with us, Chris?
Yes. Jennifer?
Hello, yes.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. Yeah, I, I, I wasn't sure what you had said because I got kicked out and made a panelist. But I have a few asks here. I've been asked a lot to look over different ordinances and rewrite them. And I wanted to go through the, I recommended an order about eight of them, and I wanted to know if you wanted to go through them. And if you liked my list, because it takes a while to write an ordinance, to get the planning board's input, to put out a public ad and have a hearing at town council. So it takes a while, and there were so many that need to be done. I wanted some direction.
So may I ask a question? Or go ahead, Denise, show your hand up.
I did review what you're recommending, and my time on the town council tells me that this, I'm sure there's others I could think of, but, but these nine would be one of the top priorities.
Nine?
Oh, eight. Sorry, Donna, eight.
So, so I have, I do, I do have, I do have a question for you. Jennifer, these ordinances, I mean, did, did, did this come from you as direction from the planning board, from individuals? Like, where do these come from?
They came from different places. So I would say I had planning board members talk about. So I would say, I had planning board members talk about solar ordinance. I've had town counselors talk about. The town administrator talked to me that there were quarry issues. And there are my own, looking at the zoning code, I think there needs to be a codification of the town, of the form-based code because that can be a little confusing. And consistency with the comp plan is required in two years, and that was in 2018. So we're at that point. So there were a lot of different. Telling me that I came up with this list.
So I think it's a pretty good list. My suggestion though would be, if possible, before you start, just because we've seen this before in town. And, and I think there, I think the order's pretty good. Although, I will note on number two, the codify the form-based code. If you look in the Community Comprehensive Plan, there's a section in there that says, we need to do something about the form-based code because it's too, it's voluntary. So either, you know, decide what parts of it are going to be mandatory or not. But so there may not be a ton of sense in spending a huge amount of money codifying stuff that is not actually mandatory and we don't do it. We need to clean it up and decide if we're going to incorporate it as a requirement or get rid of it. But this would be my only suggestion, which is that, and I'm sure you've experienced this because I know you are an experienced municipal planner. Everybody's got an opinion. And so sometimes what happens is that the path that you go down, you may get a lot of buy-in from the planning board and then you get to the council and council says, oh, no, no, we don't like this at all. So my only suggestion to you is before you do a lot of work, that, you know, potentially some conceptual presentations on these things is not a bad, bad idea. That way, before you spend all the time on the nuts and bolts of actually drafting the ordinances and doing the legal work, that you have a general idea from a conceptual point of view that you've got support at the planning board and support at the council. But other than that, I think it's a good list. And obviously, the Community Comprehensive Plan, you know, that's a big deal. We have got to get and start and get that, and get that done. On that one, I might actually ask, because there's so much voting in there, whether or not you take that one separately and sort of prioritize the to-do list there with both the council and the planning board? Because there are so, there's so many zoning things in that particular one. That's, that's my suggestion. John?
So.
I want to be third.
Okay.
I think, I think these are all great items. The only thing, the only question I would ask is, you know, whether or not we can postpone the expenditure of funds as it relates to proceeding with these. The fiscal conservative in me worries that, you know, we are looking to, you know, expend $25,000. And, you know, well, you know, while it's, you know, I don't want to seem, you know, penny or penny wise and pound foolish. You know, I think in this case, you know, given where we are financially, it may not be the best for us to expend these funds this fiscal year and see if we can stretch it out to the next fiscal year. Or perhaps even see if our esteemed solicitor has some resources we can leverage in his office rather than going out and hiring a separate consultant just because of what's going on with our budget and the uncertainty that we face.
Um, I think Donna asked to be third?
Well, Nancy's hand was up before mine, so.
Okay, then you, then we'll go to Nancy and then we'll go back to Donna.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this list that, that the, was presented to us by the planning department, I'm really struck by the solar ordinance, which as we know was a complete farce and needs to be redone. The codify approval number two was approved by, in June 2014. And it hasn't, somehow that hasn't been amended. And the zoning ordinance, as we know, has to be, that happened in 2018, the comprehensive plan. So we're coming up short. And then the other things are more current things. So I just, I just want to express my concern that there are so many things that were very old that hadn't been dealt with. That's all I have to say.
I think in part that not having a staff professional in that office has made it very, very difficult. So we are very happy that we have a planner in the office to take that on.
Whatever. All I know is I hear throughout this meeting, we have department heads and we have, you know, people who are in charge of this thing. So we don't need this committee or that committee and yet then we're presented with this kind of thing. So that's all I have to say. Donna as well.
I, I think, I think to that point, we haven't had a staff professional in that office for a very long time to be able to do this. And when, when you don't have a staff professional there, that's what happens and things get backed up. Nancy Mello has her hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on a second. I forgot I needed to get to Donna because she deferred on her turn. Donna?
Um, okay, number, number seven. I, I am tracking the animal ordinances. And I did speak to Jennifer on this. I also spoke to Tricia also. And before we start moving into zoning on the animal ordinances, I've been in, in some discussions with, with Michael and he's been very helpful. And we've come up for some ideas and we've looked at, we've looked at ordinances in other towns that seem to be very good, that we could add to ours. So before we start spending money on zoning, and of course, we'll run it by Jennifer, we're going to come up with, we're going to start with one animal first and then work our way down.
What are you starting with, Donna? Goats?
Well, yeah, but, but that's not the first animal I'm going to deal with. So, um, so, and I also am very interested in the care of the animals and what that's going to come under because there's been some horrendous stuff going on. And we don't want to take part in horrendous stuff for animals living in a certain way. If we can prevent that, I don't want to micromanage people, but animals do need, do need certain care and they need certain way to live in shelters and that. So we'll be working on this, Mike and myself. And then we'll be bringing it to the council and bringing it to Jennifer, if that's okay with Jennifer. And see if it needs zoning, to see if it possibly does not need zoning. And we can see if the council likes the language or wants to have it added. It really doesn't have much on animals at all, under animals. It's like four pages. Most of it's about horses, actually. But anyway, I just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you, Donna. Nancy?
Yeah, I just want to respond to a comment on that number two, codify the form-based code. The form-based code was approved in 2014. That requires legal expertise to get it into, be codified. You need a whole nother use table and narrative on that. So every year I raise it and every year the money goes back because we haven't hired the person. Every legal solicitor we've had has told me they're going to handle it and it hasn't been handled. Yet we've had buildings built under it, whether or not it's volunteer or not. The medical center on Main Road, the Dollar Store on Stafford Road. And I, I'm sure there's other buildings. So it has to be codified. You can amend it, you can withdraw it, but it still has to be codified. And we need to hire some legal specific on this issue. It's, the book is an inch thick. We've got to get it down to where we can put it into our code of ordinances. It's quite a task.
Is that something Mike can do?
I think it's a lot of work if we didn't use Mike for everything else. But I mean, I, I think it's a lot, a lot of work. Apparently, the last four solicitors haven't been able to get it done.
So Jennifer, it sounds to me like the consensus has, the council has something of a consensus that, you know, that the worklist looks logical. I'm not, are we looking for, I can't quite tell though.
Yeah, what the next, what the next ask is. So there is money put aside in this budget. And I just wanted to make you aware that it will go away July 1st. And the town did vote to, it's, um, let's see, the, the town set aside $15,000 for legal services to review and rewrite the zoning code and $10,000 to re-codify the town code.
Understanding that it continues if there's no new budget?
I don't know that. Do you, Chris? So, I just wanted to finish. So we wouldn't be able to, if we decided to go ahead with this, I still could work through this list, but it's going to take me a while. So I thought it would, it would expedite things if we hired somebody else as well. But we wouldn't be able to go out for RFP before July 1st. So I was thinking of piggybacking with the state and using an MPA to, up to $25,000, you can use whatever the state has gone through the RFP process. And then I know that the town allows up to $5,000 to directly hire like a legal person. So that, that's all I'm asking. If you feel like you need to, you know, let it roll over, go away, I'm fine with that. It'll just take longer to do this. So.
Well, I think this can's been getting kicked down the road for so long. In part, as I said, because we haven't had the personnel to do it. And, you know, you know, we've said forever that the zoning code needs to get updated. We spent a lot of time and money and effort on the comprehensive plan. We need to get it implemented. And, you know, I think it's one of those things. And just, you know, one thing in the comprehensive plan, which is to look at the housing densities. You know, the economy is not good right now, obviously, and things are slow. Nonetheless, Massachusetts is continuing its work on putting that commuter rail into Fall River. And, you know, if we don't do something about our, the, the potential number of single-family houses that we're going to end up with in Tiberian, we're going to end up with a lot of more, you know, single-family houses. So I, I personally have, am happy to see a planner in that office. And I, I'd like to see this work go forward. Nancy?
So I sort of jokingly, not jokingly, but I threw out something. But Jennifer was talking about what the current budget last year. And I think it addresses the fact that, as I understand it, and it's again mixing agenda items, but we may be faced this year with a possibility that last year's budget continues into this year because we don't have a new budget. So I just think that needs to be addressed too.
Um, I'd like to say something.
Yes, Donna.
I'm for saving money, but sometimes something just has to be done if you already have the money rather than having it brushed into the, the general fund, which would be nice. But I think Jennifer really needs to start on this and she does have a little bit of money to work with. And it looks like she's using the price agreement. I think for myself, I, I think the money, it'd be wisely spent. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Does anyone else have a comment? Chris, go ahead.
Just to answer Nancy's, Mrs. Driggs' question, I believe that there would be money in the carry-forward budget as well. Because you would carry the same budget. It's probably one of the few budget items that would actually benefit by carrying forward that, that has a process. So I think she'd be fine to move forward.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion here necessarily. There isn't anything, we don't have anything on this regarding a, it does say authorization or request authority. I'm, I'm not, Mike, can you look at this? I'm not sure.
I mean, so I think, I think the authority has already been, the, 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 obviously the financial backup to do what she needs to do has already been there. She just, I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Planner, but you're really just trying to let the council know that you intend to actually move forward and try and get this done with the money that's already been appropriated. Obviously, it's hadn't been done in the past according to Miss, the town clerk. But again, if there were any concern, I think she put this on the agenda just because of the financial issues that are pending within town, but she wanted the authority to move forward.
Okay, John?
So when it comes to the financial piece, ultimately, if the administrator thinks it's okay, then it's okay by me. And since you mentioned it, I did look it up. MBTA projects summer 2023, the connection to Fall River.
Yes, I'm.
Was awarded May 11th, 2020.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a big scary thing for us. That's a, you know, we've got a lot of buildable land here, a huge amount of it. So anyway, so I guess, so, so what, if we're in consensus, basically what we're saying to Jennifer is good luck and Godspeed. Is that what we're, we're doing here?
We got the money, go spend it.
Okay, okay, off you go, Jennifer.
This is being recorded, right? Counselor Driggs just said that?
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next is me, approval of the Bay Street Moratorium extension to December 31st, 2020. There are two remaining properties awaiting DTM.
Skip one there.
What happened to the vicious dog?
Yeah, she skipped one. Oh, I did? I got to turn the lights on in my office here. It's getting kind of dark. I got to turn a light on here. I can't see it.
Somebody get Madam President the best light, please. There we go.
It was light when this meeting started. Oh, that's a lot better. Okay.
To us too, Patricia, all we were seeing were two headlights of your eyeglasses.
Ah, you need to tell me this. Okay, town clerk, authorization to release funds held in the restricted vicious dog account to the unrestricted general fund. Nancy?
Yes, this is an account that I first addressed a few years after I became clerk. And Mr. Amerantis was the treasurer. It's been held in a reserve account as best as we could go back, back to 1977 sometime. There was an expense that I was explained, it was explained to me that it has to do with like packs of wild dogs getting to the farm animals and things. But now we have the trust and coverage. I think this account should just be released from the restricted into the general fund unrestricted. It's always been under the clerk. It actually came from dog licenses. There was a statute to in fact, put $2 into this fund. There's been no activity on it since before 2006 other than the receipts. And then in 2007, the treasurer and I decided we weren't going to be putting any more money into this because it hadn't been used since 1977.
So here's the question, Madam Clerk. How much money is there?
There is $49,436.
All the dogs.
Right. My understanding is there's been no action because there are other, other things that have supplanted it that you don't need it.
Right, so it's just sat in the general fund. It's in the general fund anyway. But it's the restricted part. I'd like to just release it to the unrestricted, which I think I could do anyway, solicitor. No?
I think so.
Can I make a motion?
Denise?
I asked about this account a few years ago when I was looking into all these funny little restricted accounts. I was told at the time by the solicitor that there were specific things we could spend with that money and only those things. And at the time, I, I asked if we could move it to the general fund. But there was, but according to him, and this was about three years ago, the answer was no. Because there was a specific reason to set up this.
reason to set up this fund. It was supposed to be spent for that. So I don't know. I, I might be wrong, but that's what I was told at the time.
Well, I've worked with two treasurers on this and solicitors and I think we could have done this before, but it wasn't doing any harm because it was in the general fund anyway. But it was restricted and it can only be used for dog, which we don't really have those now. And if we did, I, I think we've got the trust and different insurance now than we had then.
Okay, John?
It's up to the.
So if, uh, if I'm reading the solicitor's response correctly, this needs to be a resolution that goes on in the Financial Town Referendum that the populace will vote on in order to release it to the general fund. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Solicitor?
I disagree.
I didn't, I didn't say that. I didn't, I'm, I'm not sure how you handle moving things from restricted to unrestricted.
Right.
But that's.
You're muted yourself.
Just tell me. That's because Denise is fluent with my spacebar. Um, yeah. I, um, I am, I, I didn't look into it that specifically. Um, I don't know if you, uh, I, I don't know how you move things from restricted to generally councils can do that, but if it needs to be approved by the FDM, um, they can do it that way too, but generally councils move things from restricted to unrestricted unless, unless the FDM put it in there to the first, in the first place.
It did not. It went in there by statute.
Yeah.
But it went in there by statute.
Yes.
Dave?
That means you can move it?
I believe you can. I, I believe you, I'm not aware. I, I know there was, there was a time that fines and stuff did have to go from, 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 from dogs and stuff like that for vicious dogs. They had to go into a special account. There was that. Tom, but I'm not, I'm not aware of, of, of status of that. It sounds like the last time money was put in that account is when, Nancy? Town clerk?
Nineteen seventy-seven. Two thousand seven.
So twelve years ago.
We stopped putting any money in at that time.
How about this?
Time it was used by council minutes is nineteen seventy-seven.
Okay. So I will be happy to look into it if the council wants to approve, they're putting into the general fund pending, uh, you know, a formal, a formal, uh, opinion by the solicitor. That's fine too. I, I, I'd like to look into it. I'll talk to Denise tomorrow to like to see who she talked to, but I'm not aware of, um, I'm not aware of, of, of that you cannot move it once it's there. It sounds to me like an obsolete account.
Fine.
In that case, does anyone want to make a motion pending approval of this solicitor, John?
I would love to make that motion to, uh, to approve the transfer as requested by the clerk pending legal review by our solicitor.
That came from Nancy. Any other comments or are we ready to vote? Council Demodaris?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, well, forty-nine thousand dollars in the unrestricted portion we didn't have before.
It's an employee salary.
Good job.
Okay, now we're on to the approval of the Bay Street Moratorium extension to December thirty-first, twenty twenty. There are two properties awaiting D E M documentation. Um, this is something that we have, uh, done on a regular basis. Um, I think the last extension, I'm not sure exactly where it went to, um, but, uh, this is sort of regular housekeeping, um, until all of those properties, uh, have D E M documentation. John?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Bay Street Moratorium extension to December thirty-one, twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Yes. There's a second. Any comments? Are we ready to vote? In that case, Council Demodaris?
Yes.
Council Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes, and I don't want to jinx it, but Counselor Demodaris' mic has stopped doing that funny thing.
I fixed it.
Counselor Perry?
Yeah.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Uh, the next up, Counselor Cook, discussion on aquaculture as it relates to taxation.
Okay, um, I was, I listened to the, um, June first, um, meeting by the Harbor Commission and a few of the, uh, people that were on the phone and some of them also asked the question and some of their, uh, correspondents not understanding how taxation works for aquaculture. And frankly, I wasn't real clear on it either. So, um, I, they were concerned about the value of their homes. They were concerned like anyone would because that, that's everybody's wealth is their home. So I got in touch with, uh, Mr. Roberts, the assessor, and I sent him uh, questions and I put it in a, a form of the agenda and he said he'd be glad to come to the meeting and answer the questions. There's only a few of them because this is what people wanted to know. So it shouldn't take that long. About five minutes or so. So I hope, I hope David's here.
Yes, hang on.
All right, David's here.
Dave, so can you answer some questions for us about, um, taxation and aquaculture?
Oh, he's muted.
David, you're muted. Unmute yourself.
I don't see him there.
Don't use the spacebar.
No, Dave's still muted.
There we go.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
All right, uh, so yes, uh, Counselor Cook had asked me a couple of questions regarding, uh, if any of these would affect property values and/or how we could go about taxing them. Um, has it right now, the communities that have these, uh, North Kingston, North King, uh, South Kingston and such. Um, I did reach out to the tax assessors there and they have not seen any impact on market value of properties at all. Uh, there's also a study that had been conducted by U R I and one down in Virginia regarding property value impact. And in Rhode Island, they didn't see any impact. In Virginia, they actually saw a increase in value, but I think they misinterpreted just regular appreciation in the market. Um, but they did not see any negative impact for, uh, oyster farms that were, uh, completely submerged and not visible from the shore. Um, if they were above the waterline and they were cages, they did see a, uh, a negative impact, but it's still very insignificant. Um, so I guess overall at this point, I would say that they would have in something like this would not have a negative impact. Um, but has, if these things type of prop, uh, farms, uh, continue, obviously I'll continue to do more research, but everything that I've seen right now more or less points to the fact that they do not have a negative impact. As far as any type of taxation on, um, the farm itself, uh, since it's in state waters, uh, it's not taxable. And also since it's considered a farm, it's not taxable. There is a slight exception in the state statutes regarding farm equipment. And that exception would be that if the value of the equipment is in excess of ten thousand dollars, uh, Tivana could petition the state of Rhode Island for some type of reimbursement. Um, I just don't know how likely that would end up being. And as far as the value of this equipment, you know, um, you know, every, everything that I've researched online, um, some of the equipment is five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars. So I'm not sure if cumulatively it would really be anything that would be reimbursed by the state long-term anyway.
Guess that answers the question. Uh, so there's no tangible tax. Um.
Question?
Yes.
Am I on?
Yes, go ahead, Nancy.
So, so David, one of the, I don't know a lot about this aquaculture. I'm, I'm learning as is Donna. But one of the things I learned going to the Harvard Commission that there are various ways to approach these, these things that are built out on state land under the water. And one is by land access, one is by water access. And I would think that would make a difference for a property owner if somebody who has an agriculture culture thing growing, granted on state line under the water, but people have to access it from the land. I would think that would accept would, um, make a difference in their property value. No?
That particular situation, there could be some type of impact as far as just the view or the, the mere existence of them. It has not contributed to any negative impact of property values. If they, yeah. So, but if there is some type of access point next to a property and there is some type of continuous action of commercial trucks or activity, then, you know, then one could reasonably assume then that there would be some type of negative impact on market value. Uh, but that would be a case by case situation and not just an overall impact of market value.
And the other thing that hits me is the, the property owner's use of the water in front of them. Um, how, how far out do these things have to be before, you know, somebody has, has waterfront property and somewhere, somewhere out there is now a state sponsored agriculture thing. How, how far out is that? Like, what does it affect the property owner's use of the water in front of their property?
Yeah, I, I don't know as far as requirements on how far they have to be sighted offshore. However, I do know that some of these, uh, oyster farms, they're, they're basically given a lease by the state. Um, but that doesn't preclude anyone from, you know, if they have a boat going over these things, if, if there's enough clearance. Um, so I don't know technically enough about these things yet. Uh, but I do know that it does not, once, once there's a lease issued, it does not one hundred percent prohibit anyone else from utilizing the waterway.
Huh. I'm sort of surprised, but okay.
John?
So I just want to point out to the rest of the council that there's a number of studies on, on this factor and the benefits to aquaculture, as far as I can tell, seem to outweigh the negatives. Um, you know, ultimately it's not our land upon which to be granting access to because the state owns everything below the mean high, high tide level. So, um, there's not really much that the council can do short of, you know, express displeasure or positivity towards, you know, any of these things. Ultimately, it's going to fall to the state as to whether or not they want to do something. And as far as I can tell, most of what, uh, the access points are to these farms are, are, you know, either public, you know, access points to the water or it's state property. So I don't necessarily know what we're debating here because in reality, I mean, we don't really have control.
Can I ask?
Uh, we don't, but we do have a little bit of say and I, I, I will say this and I don't want to, we, this was supposed to be a short discussion on taxation, so we shouldn't get too far afield from that, but, um, you know, we're a town with fifteen miles of coastline and very limited public access to the water because a great deal of our coastline is, is, you know, privately owned. And, um, so when these things go in places, um, that either impede people's access or they're in places where people have access to the shoreline and it's a popular, uh, recreational part of the water. Um, then I think it's, it's worth our being mindful of it. Chris, you have your hand up?
So, um, a little while back, um, solicitor Donna Cook and myself had a conference call with CRMC and we made it abundantly clear to them that, um, to the extent that Mrs. Driggs had noted, uh, any type of commercial activity would not be something the town would be in favor of if it was in a rural residential area. Uh, basically you're running a commercial enterprise, you need to go to a commercial dock and/or a commercial ramp. Uh, you need to, if you're going to run a commercial operation, you need to run it from the water, out of the water to a commercial enterprise. And that same, um, information was relayed to the, uh, Harvard Commission at their last meeting. As it, none of the, uh, applicants who are looking for test sites and/or full sites are property owners with sites in front of their properties. What you're speaking about there are repairian rights. And repairian rights, I believe, uh, being a commercial official myself, are, are only related to moorings in front of your property, not for commercial enterprises. So you're not entitled to have a oyster, oyster farm in front of your own property just by entitlement for being a, a property owner.
But my understanding is that part of this question was whether we would benefit at all taxation wise, and I gather not. It's all state, whatever taxes start at the state.
That's correct.
Right. There really are no taxes though.
All right, all right. So unless there, I mean, there's no action item on this. Thank you, Dave, for the update. I appreciate it. Or John, you wanted to say something?
Just, just as it relates to taxation, if I kind of think this process out a little bit, right, in theory, if there was an aquaculture farm or two in Tiburon and the proprietors of said farm sold their goods to local restaurants, Tiburon would directly impact as a result of a meals tax when that product was ultimately sold to the end user, the consumer. So I guess maybe there's some positive impact to be had.
Potentially.
I think about it from a tax standpoint.
Potentially.
Potentially. Okay, so Dave, thank you very much for joining us. Um, much appreciated. And, uh, you know, I'm sure we're going to be hearing about more from, uh, the town and CRMC about, uh, the oyster farming.
Have a good night.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, Dave.
That brings us up to, um, item I, Counselor Perry and David Paul and, and the Dog Park Committee request authorization to use town owned land by the Tiburon Fire Station on Roosevelt Road for Dark Park consisting of two point one seven nine acres identified as block one twenty-two, abutting the Tiburon Library. Joe Perry?
Madam President, thank you. I was asked this on the agenda. So I've been kind of dormant for a while. We're trying to get, um, permission to be at land so that we can start, um, preparing, uh, this site if possible. Um, we were looking at, um, possibly creating another entrance off of Roosevelt Avenue, which would be south of the entrance for the library. Because right that parcel of land is accessible from the fire station, Randall Road. Um, but it would be better if we could from Roosevelt Drive or Avenue, whatever it is, um, and put an entrance from there and we would be able to use the Boogamash Recreation for parking as well as a little parking area over the dog parks, let's speak. I don't know if David Paul is on, if he he or Bob. If they want to mention anything, um, the, the, the area is about one point two five acres. And he, when I talked to David last, he had talked to somebody in the, um, library, I believe it's Jennifer, but I'm not sure that's the, uh, person who runs the library. She had said that as far as she knew, they didn't have any problems with us um, using that, that we had a, a separate entrance. Um, if we cannot make another entrance and we'd have to use the library we would have to go through the, uh, library ward to get permission to do that. So really what, you know, what we'd like to do is just get permission use that land. We can start doing something, clearing it and, and prepare, getting it ready. So that's what we're looking for the town to either say yes, you know, we have the graces to do that or no. But this is something that we've been trying to do since last April and, um, we're afraid that people are losing interest if we're not doing something at this point.
Chris, did you notice, is David Paul on?
David Paul is not, but Bob Sedoma, who's also, Bob Sedoma is on the committee as well, isn't he? He's on. I'm trying to get him unmuted.
Okay.
Now, Bob, you want to mute yourself?
In the meantime, do any counselors have any questions or comments for, for Joe?
Whenever it's convenient for you, Trish, I would like to make some comments. Rick Rogers, DPW.
Whenever it's convenient for you, Trish, I would like to make some comments. Rick Rogers, DPW, whenever it's convenient.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Joe, uh, John?
I'm open to hearing the, uh, director's commentary before I ask my questions.
Okay, in that case, Rick, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, DPW has done some coordination and to, uh, a- augment some of what Joe has said. The discussion, excuse me, the discussions have been either accessing, uh, from the south grass of the library or another, uh, off of Roosevelt Drive's sidewalk area, crossing a little culvert, which is doable. And of course, parking is available at the Bogomash, uh, recreational area. And also, it could be parking added, uh, to the south of the existing library parking where you drive in, you could, to the south of that, add some parking spots. And it would, the access pretty much would need to be, as Joe mentioned, from the western portion of the lot, so we do not cross uh, the fire station or the antenna or the new, uh, septic system. And the dog park would be to the west of the septic system with a little buffer. And also the tree warden, uh, the past tree warden has commented and passed those comments on to the dog park committee via DPW on what clearing would, uh, be, you know, acceptable from the tree warden's point of view. So there has been, as Joe mentioned, uh, numerous discussions with uh, different parties, Chief Marlowe, Catherine from the library, uh, and the some of the rec committee.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I do have, um, just a couple of comments. So has, does anybody know if anybody's actually spoken with the library board of trustees?
I do not. Trish, I, we have spoken to Catherine, the director, but not necessarily the trustees.
Okay. Joe? So?
The director, not the trustees, what I was told, David Paul.
Okay, so, um, this is a question for the solicitor and, and, um, I understand, to me, it seems more logical to have an entrance into this from Roosevelt so that you're not using the library parking lot for parking and you're having the entrance there. So parking at the skate park and, you know, crossing over and going that way makes a lot of sense. However, if you actually look at the lot, you're still crossing over library property because it's, well, which is town property. But that lot doesn't go all the way to the sidewalk. The library lot is like a dog shit, it's got a dog leg on it. So that's the big part of the lot where the, where the library building is in the parking lot. And then there's this dog leg that goes along the sidewalk all the way down Roosevelt. So that's still, you, you'd actually have to cross part of the lot that is the library lot. Now, for the solicitor, um, the library, you know, is a little bit unusual in that the, the owner of the lot in the building are the town of Tiverton. Um, but of course, it's operated by an independent board of trustees. So, uh, first of all, I think just to be, um, sort of get everybody on the same page, it would be good to bring the library trustees into the decision. But my question for the solicitor, because at the end of the day, it, it, it is the town's land, is there an issue with that with having the entrance, having to cross over a portion of the library lot to get to this lot?
Not if it's owned by the town, it's town land, so.
Right. And I mean, the other thing, we have a planner, if we needed to, we could always do an administrative subdivision, right? And re, reconfigure that dog leg, because the library doesn't need the dog leg. I don't know why it's there. It's just this like long skinny strip.
Yeah, we could, we could merge, we could merge that with the dog park if we had to, to make it cleaner, but passing over town land, whether it's owned by, I mean, it's all, all owned by the town, right? So.
It's all owned by the town, it's just on different lots.
Right.
It's just you'd have to cross over one lot to get to the other one.
I mean, I think to be a good neighbor or a good steward, you might let the library know, but it doesn't sound like it would cause an issue. I, I don't know. I don't think it would, but I'm not, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I, I, I do think it would be good to speak with the library trustees, just because I think it's a good thing. But other than that, it, um, it seems to work as a lot pretty well and, um, far enough behind the fire station. And I think, um, you know, it's kind of nice that it'd be part of the Bogomash Skate Park and Playground and so I guess, um, the question is, um, they're asking for authorization from us to actually, uh, use that land or the dog park.
Are you available for more comments, Trish, from DPW?
Sure, Rick, go ahead.
The, it was discussion way back when about who would maintain it and and who would act, and there would be a plan drawn up and, and some kind of little, uh, maintenance plan. Because it was my understanding, uh, DPW will do whatever they're directed to do, but that it would not fall under the maintenance umbrella of DPW, but would be sort of a, uh, or would be an independent entity. And they would take care of the cleanup and whatever repairs would need to be done.
Yep. John?
So my question here, right, if we're talking about split uses on 122, um, shouldn't we go for an administrative subdivision of that parcel first, especially if the plan is to have an independent entity? Structure, set up, build, maintain this, this piece of property, even if it's ultimately owned by the town. Um, you know, I, I would want to make sure that, you know, we, we have that piece cordoned off appropriately. And then the other question I have is whether or not, you know, if we ever do wind up with a facility study that results in looking at the fire department on Crandall Road and determines that we need a bigger building and more use of that land is, is there any potential negative impact to, you know, siphoning off a piece of that property for an alternate use when right now it's all essentially for the fire department?
Right, well, I think the dog park committee is a town committee, so it's not, I mean, they're, they won't exist outside of the town, right?
So if they're a town committee, and based on what I've heard over the years, it relates to like Tiverton Celebrates and that sort of thing, they can't really raise funds, it's all going to be town dollars that funnel into this project, am I correct?
No, it, no, they can, that, that, I think that's the whole reason that they'd like us to make a determination on the land in order for them to go out and fundraise. Just the way that we fundraised for, I mean, you know, we raised a whole lot of money for Grinnell's Beach. The recreation committee is raising money for the town farm playground. Um, there's a, a proper and appropriate way to, to raise money for a, a specific town purpose. And the benefit to having it run through the town as a town entity raising the money for this is that then your donation is tax deductible. So, um, so that's a, a good thing. I, I think, um, I think my only concern about this is I'd be happy to approve this um, for an entrance off of Roosevelt. I would feel uncomfortable approving this for an entrance out, out of the library in the absence of having a discussion with the library. If the library board came back afterwards and said, oh, well, we don't mind if the entrance is from the library parking lot, I'd feel differently, but I'd be okay approving it as long as right now the entrance was off of Roosevelt. And potentially, we actually, to John's point, asked the planner to look at the lots and, you know, here's the fire station, septic system, the this, the that, and see if she thinks it makes sense to do any sort of administrative subdivision to make it cleaner. John?
I do, I do have one more question. So as I'm looking at the, the plat and the lots, you know, I noticed that there's 116, that's a completely landlocked piece of property that's, um, it's, it's basically stuck by, surrounded by town property, other private property. Um, you know, is there any negative implications if we start to build this out and then the results is, you know, we need to expand parking, say, along Roosevelt Avenue? Potentially encumber access to that property by the owners of the property?
I don't think so. I think the general consensus seems to be there's plenty of parking at the Bogomash Skate Park for this. I mean, it's not, it's not our dantua dog park. I mean, it's not, you know, a seven acre dog park.
Can I, I need to, um, was, um, Rick Rogers, was his concern uh, dealt with? It seems like all of a sudden we were talking about a subdivision and nobody answered Mr. Rogers about the GPW not being responsible for the cleanup and care of this, uh, this dog park. Nobody seemed to answer that.
Well, I do seem to remember when this committee was created that their intent was that there be, they would continue, there would be a volunteer committee that would, you know, um, help with the maintenance of this, uh, you know, on a regular basis. You know, the membership might change over time, but the thought was there enough, uh, you know, avid dog owners that they could have a committee that would do that. Yes, Joe, am I right?
Right, right.
Is, is that going to be in writing that, uh, Rick's not responsible in the DPW? It needs, I mean, it seems to be just a consensus thing. Is there anything written anywhere that that's not going to be his job?
The first thing, to get permission to use the land first, and then the, the, the committee would sit down and put everything in writing as to what, what would take place, who's going to maintain it, who's going to take care of, you know, um, doing everything later on. I don't know if they were going to turn it over to recreation or if it was going to be, you know, just the committee itself taking care of it. First was to get permission to use the land, first of all. Once they got a place, we know they could do, have a dog park, then they would get together and put everything in writing and have it approved by the solicitor, have them look at it before they continue. That was my understanding.
I'm also assuming that once there's an actual plan, like I know there's a schematic here and everything, but once there's an actual plan that they would come to the council with all those details, the plan, with the maintenance plan, with the status of the fundraising, yada, yada, before it went under construction. John?
So this is, seems to be spiraling out of control, so I'd like to make a motion to grant authorization um, for the, uh, use of the town owned land on, uh, plat 512, plot 122. I'm sorry, plat 513, plot 122, um, for the dog park, uh, pending, uh, review by the planner and potential administrative subdivision of the land.
Would you be willing to modify that to include, um, any discussion with the, uh, library trustees?
By all means.
In terms of which entrance, which, whether or not they have a preference on the entrance part? Nancy, you're muted.
Is there a second, by the way?
Yes, second.
Denise is the second. Nancy, did you want to say something?
I, I just wanted to say, I, um, Patricia, I was going to agree with what you just suggested, subject to the library.
I'm not necessarily saying subject to their approval, but their determination on the en- entrance area, I guess, is how I put it.
Build a dog park.
Yeah, okay, so there's a motion and a second if there is nothing else. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Driggs?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Diomedeo?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Okay, dog park on its way.
Thank you very much.
And I'm a cat person.
You don't have a cat park.
We'll have cats there too.
I need a cat park.
Yeah, you can't herd cats.
Okay, so, um, okay, folks, uh, we're getting towards the end. The town administrator and the town treasurer, I think Denise Saretta is here, are, we're going to talk about the status of setting the fiscal year 21 budget, the cash on hand, the general assembly legislation, the town's cash flow liquidity and alternatives to address quarterly tax revenue, including the possibility of short term borrowing. So I'm going to turn it over to Denise and Chris. Chris, you're muted.
Sorry, let me just say there's a lot to swallow in that one little paragraph. Um, it's not that we're looking to specifically do those items. Um, because I know we don't, we're not going to be setting the budget. The budget committee will be doing that after the, you know, during the FTR process. But to that end, there are a number of things that we're not doing this year that we have financed and set aside for that I think the council should take a look at and give me a priority list as to what items you would like to be suggested to the budget committee as they go through those deliberations. I don't know if the budget committee is going to come back and meet with the town council or if you want me to convey your thoughts and uh, issues to the budget committee during those deliberations. But I wanted that process to start, uh, for the councils to start thinking about things that, A, you know, priorities to cut and priorities that you want to have revisited in the 2021 budget. So what I did provide is a snapshot in time of where I believe we'll be at June 30th. Um, we're actually in a little better shape than what we thought when we were looking at this back in April. Um, I still believe by the end of the June 30th that we will be with a balanced budget. There are a number of things still within the budget that, uh, there are a lot of moving parts that I'm uncomfortable saying we can actually generate savings when in fact every day we get some bills here and there that I wasn't anticipating. So I didn't strip every dollar and every budget item as being discretionary to come up with a finite number. But I do believe, based on the presentation that I provided to you, uh, that there, the, the savings that I did project are pretty confident that we'll get there. Uh, the, the numbers is, as it relates to the budget, uh, and those savings and the revenue numbers are pretty much up to date. Uh, Denise has helped me tremendously, believe me, she's done a fabulous job of putting these numbers together in a very reasonable, uh, expectation of where we are. Um, so I, you know, wanted to go through those with you if you had any questions about that. But I still, like I said, at the end of the day, I do believe that we'll get below, um, or at least to a balanced budget. Uh, as, on, on the other items, um, the tax levy issue, um, has been worked on, uh, by a solicitor at Masolo, uh, with a number of people from the league. Uh, that has been, been submitted to the general assembly today. Uh, I did, uh, get a, uh, an email from, uh, Rep, um, Edwards that, that has been, uh, brought to House Finance. House Finance will, uh, be looking at that this week. And the full general assembly should be acting on that next week. So that would provide, there's a number of things in that bill. Um, we're not asking for all, everything in that bill. Uh, there are a couple of options that are available for different cities and towns who have F, uh, financial town meetings and financial town referendums. Some towns want the ability to use the current year levy for the entire year. Uh, we would just prefer to use it for the first quarter so that we can get our FTR off the ground. We, we are going to have a cash flow problem. Um, if we don't get something in place, I mean, we can bring the current year budget into next year. I'll be working this week with a number of, uh, the different union factions to, uh, discuss that issue with them uh, so that we can get through that first phase until we actually get to an adopted budget. Uh, just trying to think what else we have, um. The only issue we have is if for some reason this potential legislation that's with the general assembly stalls, we may need to look at some sort of short term borrowing, uh, which again, we would seek our authorization for, but, uh, I believe we want to get prepared for that as an alternate plan, just in case. And the July 1st is coming on us very quick. So we're trying to get our ducks in a row. Uh, we have, um, I, I alluded to what the general fund reserve is, what's available to it. I mean, we can dip into that and would pay it back with tax anticipation notes or short term borrowing. I mean, that's available for this kind of purpose, but you know, we are spending, we, I estimate that we would spend somewhere around three and a half to four million dollars a month, uh, and as a normal cost. So you know, we, we are just trying to be prepared and provide you with the best available scenarios to move this town forward. Uh, Denise, I don't know if you have anything you want to weigh in on. I mean, I I will say that she's done a, a very good job of helping me, uh, to understand where we are and where we need to get to.
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Denise.
Oh, uh, I think the only thing I would add is, um, in the absence of this legislative approval, uh, I think I think our cash flow will be okay through, you know, as we approach July, mid-July, but we were just getting concerned that if we aren't allowed to issue our tax bills, we typically collect 12 to 13 million dollars in the first two weeks of July every year. And, you know, that, those funds would not be available to us. So just wanted to kind of put it out there that while we've never had to do it before, except Nancy might be able to clarify many, 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 many years ago, it isn't unusual for a municipality to have to borrow in advance of their tax receipts. So I did get some information about how long that takes, what it may cost, and we also might have another avenue that could prove quicker and less expensive is if we can, I spoke to one of our banks today and they would be willing to lend us and, and using our reserves and collateral, as collateral. So we have two avenues that we might be able to go on.
Denise, Demidias? My question is, if we, if the legislation does go through and we can tax, we can send out tax bills in July, which would be the same tax that they're paying now quarterly, then if you're saying three to four million dollars per month we spend, and we collect 12 to 13 million each tax bill, that, then we would be fine and we wouldn't have to borrow if the legislation goes through. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Can I ask one question on that, on the timing though? If, so the general assembly now is scheduled, the, the full, the, the full general assembly, the full house in the senate is scheduled to meet on the 16th. So assuming that this bill's gone in and it comes out of committee, and so far, everything we've heard is that they're going to do this because they know there's a bunch of towns that all want this. If this passes the full general assembly on the 16th, how long then does it take for us to get tax bills out? And how long, I, I mean, when you send the tax bills out, and I'm sorry, I don't know this, how long do you give people to pay their tax bills? So that's my question in terms of the cash flow. Does, Denise, do you know that?
Well, I spoke to Tony Lynn, the tax collector, and typically when you pull the trigger on, you know, mailing the tax bills, it takes about two weeks. So if they were to approve it on the 16th, and we needed a two-week time, turnaround time to get the tax bills printed and mailed, we have a pretty, we usually have a pretty good response from our residents and our taxpayers. And, you know, we would be okay if we could get the bills out by the first of July. I'm sure we'd have to probably extend the grace period, given the fact that the bills are going out so late, because you usually have till July 10th, and the, the bills are usually out by mid-June. We start collecting this quarter, like the third week of June, people start coming in. So you might, you might have to adjust that date, that grace period.
Okay. But we'd have, but it, but if, if this legislation passes on the 16th, then we probably, cash flow wise, will be okay.
Yes, we'd be, we, absolutely, we'd be fine.
Okay. Nancy Driggs?
So I just want to be clear. The legislation that we're talking about, what the general assembly is thinking about, is that in, in a town with the absence of a new, a new budget by the end of the fiscal year, that the tax levy from the prior year is the one that's charged. Is, am I understanding that?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Just, one little, just one little clarity to it. Depending on what we use for valuation, that rate might be a little bit lower, because you can only tax up to what your last year's levy was. So if we had an increase in valuation of, say, five or 10 million dollars, you would have to reduce the rate down to adjust for that. And my understanding is Dave Robert and Tony Lynn would like to use the most current valuations.
Oh, it's my understanding that this, this decision from the general assembly would be huge, right? Because I think prior to this, everybody expected, they, they never quite knew what to do with the fact that if you didn't have, if a town didn't have a fiscal budget by the end of the fiscal year, the prior year's thing goes forward. Everyone would say, oh, well, what do we use as a tax levy? But this would answer that question. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. The, the one caveat is, this only goes into effect when there's a state in local emergency declared. So it's not for all, for all purposes. And, and the town administrator is right. So there, you can never exceed, the, the theory is, you're only really, you're not only continuing last year's budget, but you're continuing the, the funding, the taxation under that budget, under the theory that it's already been approved by the taxpayers. So that's why, that's, that's why we're doing it. It's, it's designed to give us time until you can get to a financial town meeting or a financial town referendum.
Thank you, Mike. And this is why I raised the issue a couple of town meetings, town council meetings ago, that it just didn't make sense. If you could continue the, the budget, you obviously needed to continue the levy. But anyway, whatever. Okay, thank you.
John?
You're muted.
I'm muted. Everybody's going to do it a little bit. Didn't hit that space bar, Mr. Solicitor. So my, my question for the administrator, that last piece you mentioned about, you know, asking for concessions from the unions. I tend to take a rather paternalistic view of our employees as we are the employer. And I would hope that any discussions you have around that, and, you know, for the rest of the council are, thinking around this, is that it would be a temporary measure and one which would be repaid in full. I would hate to see our unions having gone through this in 2008, 2009, where, you know, that really became a short-term issue that extended out into, you know, many, many years of essentially, you know, little or no pay raises and little or no change to the contract. I, I would hate to see that clock reset for our, our employees. So at least that's, that's my thinking on it. And I'm sure the council can, you know, differ or deliberate if we cross that bridge. But I just wanted to make my thoughts known. Thank you.
As it relates to those issues, they are strictly related to cash flow issues and the fact that we don't have an approved budget, and that those payments that would be deferred would be, in fact, reimbursed in full, retroactive to the date of July 1st, once the adopted budget had taken place. The only other issue that, that we had somewhat discussed, and it's, we, we have put on the table tonight, is if, again, if any of this fails as it relates to this legislation, there is one other pocket of money that we really should take a look at as to whether or not we borrow against, and that might be the landfill closure account. Instead of, you know, it might be able to mitigate some costs by doing that, but I don't know what the process of doing that would be, and we would have to explore that as well.
And if it's, if it's not an enormous amount, you know, it, we're not going to have, even with the cash flow thing, I mean, when you look at what the balance of the uncommitted reserve is, it's pretty pathetic. But, you know, worst case scenario, very short-term, as much as you hate to do this, you know, we could dip into the 3% if it was just a matter of covering ourselves for, for, you know, a couple of weeks, knowing that that would be paid back once the tax receipts came in. So, I mean, it is, in, one of the things, I will just say this, having been through this, and, you know, and I know that there's some disagreement, but just about every municipal financial professional advises the community to keep more than 3% in the reserve for rainy day. And this is why, and this is our rainy day. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not fiscally prudent to have only 3% of your operating budget in savings. It just isn't.
Okay.
Mike, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I think, I want to just say this. Late today, I got an email, and it came from the Federal Reserve, I think from New York. There also may be a program that will allow cities and towns to borrow directly from the Federal Reserve for these very cash flow issues, at very, very low rates. So, and I think they're just in the process of setting that up. But getting back to the legislation, and there are 17 towns in Rhode Island that have either FTM or FTR. So it's pretty, unless there's some kind of unconstitutional issue that we're not aware of, that we've been vetting this thing a long time. We, we really do hope that it will pass, and we expect it to pass. There may be some changes to it. I can't say there won't be changes to it. That's a legislative prerogative, but there seems to be a broad consensus that cities and towns need this. And again, just to be clear, it was very clear from the very beginning that Tiverton's position was, they wanted to go forward with the FTR. They just needed to get some time behind it so that we could, you know, either increase the crowds at a, at a FTR, you know, have the public hearings and do everything that we have to do under our charter. So this is just a, by the time, there was never any attempt or even suggestion that we would not have the FTR.
Did they give you a rate, Mike?
I did not. I, I, I'm looking at the email now. I can't, for some reason, I can't open it on my phone, but no, but, it's, it came from the Federal Reserve of New York. So take a look at that.
Ten-year treasuries are 94 basis points, so it can't be expensive.
So.
You cut out the middle man, I assume, so.
So speaking of this budget thing, and we talked about this a little bit ago, about having a joint meeting with the school committee, and it's sort of been suggested now that we might include the budget committee as well, so that everybody can try and lay out on the table where, what we know in terms of revenue for next year. So what we've heard on the municipal side, what the school committee has heard on their side, because that's the big holdup here too, is that we just have no, we have no idea. And, and I'm not sure that the, the state does yet at this point, because they haven't adopted a budget. We don't know how much revenue we're getting from the state. The casino is once again a giant, who the heck knows, because, you know, based on the state's interpretation, until that law changes, I'm not sure that they wouldn't even argue now that table games aren't open, and so we're not entitled. Anyway, the focus of the discussion would really be about what we know about revenue. So I think that since that's been thrown out, I might ask Madam Clerk if she would also include the budget committee in her emails in terms of dates. I think the school committee's going to talk about some dates tomorrow, but try and let everybody get up to speed on, on what we do know. And maybe by the time we have this meeting, I mean, we're not the only town that's in this position that's pushing hard to say, the state has got to tell us what we're getting in terms of, of revenues. You cannot have, you know, you can't set an accurate budget if you, if you don't know what you're getting. So it's pretty tough. Nancy Driggs?
So I just have a couple of comments. The first is, and it's just sort of off the cuff, but this whole concept that the state could even make an argument that because the gaming tables weren't offered when they're the ones who closed them, if you, if you took that to the extreme, you could see the state making the argument that if for some reason the casinos were closed for a snow day, they, one day, they would, and that would interfere with the whole fiscal year operation, they wouldn't be obligated. And that just seems ludicrous to me. But the other thing that I have is on what I was given for tonight's meeting, I, I'm sort of, under, under Chris, Chris's thing of especially overages expected, I just didn't know what two items were, and I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but one was prior year's taxes of 685,000. I, I don't know what that refers to. And the other one was the housing aid bond of 850,195. Is this a new debt? Or what is that? I, I just didn't know what those were.
So, I can get to the prior taxes are, if you look at above where it says shortages, we have the current.
Yeah.
It shows that we're about 97%. We're, we're in that trend every year. So there's always a residual of prior year taxes that you have sitting out there until you actually have a tax sale, that, and you ultimately get it at a tax sale. So you always have prior years. That's the amount that we've collected so far.
So those were tax sales on defaults?
They're not necessarily tax sales. They might be last year's taxes that somebody was just somewhat delinquent with. They might be two years, two years before you actually get to a tax sale.
Okay, okay.
Then the lower piece is, when the school does their paperwork, and Denise can answer this probably a little bit better than I, if I said it right, she can weigh in. But when they report to the Department of Education what it is that they've expended for their major projects, they have a deadline when they get their paperwork in, and sometimes it's not completely done. And after the fiscal year starts, they may have revised what it is that they said that they had done, which would have caused the amount coming back from the state to be higher.
Yes, what are, what are, what are you referring to right now?
The housing aid bond that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
There's reimbursement that helps pay for the bonds that we have put out for those. And if they've done a larger project than what we had it originally anticipated, based on the numbers that the state had given us, that increase, we don't project something that we don't really know for sure. So if they actually did something after the S were done, that caused that rate to go up, we benefit by it by putting the general fund without capturing to, to be used. So.
That's not a new debt, though.
No.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Just let me weigh in here for a second. If you recall, last year, we did not receive one of the, the amount of the housing aid reimbursement that we had expected. So it was really a timing issue. So we got more this year than we had budgeted.
Okay, okay. Okay. And then the last question I had on what, on what you came, Mr. Chris Cotta came out with was, be committed to the 2020 budget, the 614, 213, like, what, what was general fund unassigned reserves?
I don't know exactly what that number is, but I'm assuming last year when the budget was set.
Yes.
They used so much money that was in the general fund to offset taxes with. And Denise, is that what that was?
Yes, it is. That was what was taken from the general fund to balance the budget.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So let's all really hope that the 16th, the general assembly passes this. Now, I do have a question from Mike, because the league, I think, sent out a note to municipalities asking all of us, although it came out after we posted our agenda, to adopt a resolution in support of this. But, you know, it was a little late to make it for our agenda.
Resolution, resolution supporting what? The tax?
The passage of this bill that is at the general assembly.
Which would, which would do what?
Allow us, allow us to continue with the tax levy for the, the next quarter.
Thank you.
So, I mean.
So I would make this recommendation because Tiverton is a beneficiary of that law, and one of the best, you know, one of the, one of the people who pushed for it, frankly. We probably just have a quick special meeting, Zoom meeting to just adopt a resolution. I can be happy to draft it. It should get a bill number early. If it was introduced today, probably get a bill number. If it's going to be introduced this week, it'll get a bill number by the end of the week. We can just put a bill number together, put a quick resolution together and have a quick Zoom meeting in support of it. I let the, I let the league know that I would go testify. I know Chris said he would as well. So whatever, whatever we need. And I did speak to Whip Edwards, and, you know, and he knows it's coming, and he's, he knows that Tiverton is supportive of it. But it would be helpful to get the.
Can I ask, can I ask one more question?
Well, I don't know. I was asking, do they even read them?
So, a, a local bills like that, yes, generally, because this really does only affect 17 local municipalities. It's copy, you know, it's not a, you'd be surprised, you know, these are all smaller towns. But, you know, people in Cranston, Providence, you know, Woodstock, they haven't, they don't even know what a financial town meeting is. And they're just shocked that our tax rate and our budget is set by, you know, a group of people in a meeting on a Saturday night.
Yeah.
Nancy?
I just have one question for Mike. Marcelo, so is what the general council is going to be considering is sort of an interpretation of that section B under Rhode Island general law, where if you don't, absent a public hearing, the tax levy from the prior year continues?
It's a, it's not only, it's not, it's, it's an addition to that law. So we have amended that law to make it clear that when there's a state of emergency.
Yeah.
Local and state level, the, the town, the, you have, the towns would have the authority to carry the levy forward as well. So it makes that clarification point.
So that was an added thing, added to that law that's been.
As soon as the bill is introduced, and actually, I'll be happy to distribute a, a copy to everyone.
I'd love to see it. Okay, thank you.
John?
So just a quick update on the thing that Mike was referring to, as a municipal lending facility for the New York Fed. I, I read through it quickly. They actually, it looks like they released it back on June 3rd, but I don't. June 3rd, um, but I don't think we've got a shot at this uh in Appendix A. Actually, it's, well, the the program says that the governor may designate up to two um smaller entities to participate in municipal lending facility. And according to Appendix A, it looks like Rhode Island's already filled those. So my guess is some other cash-strapped municipality in this state was first to the table or first to the trough. So that may not be an option for us. Not that it matters because it looks like our rates would probably be with origination somewhere around 200 basis points.
Okay. Any other uh questions or comments on this? I would just like to thank um Solicitor Marcello, who's done yeoman's work on behalf of the league and the municipalities who need this in uh being one of the drafters of all of this and and uh and um we're lucky that he's spent so much time on it. And then I would like to thank uh the town administrator and the town treasurer, who have been looking so carefully at all the dollars here and trying to help us figure out exactly, you know, how we make sure that uh we can keep the lights on and we can pay the bills, even though it's gonna get really skinny and it's gonna get really tight for a little bit. Because it's a, it's a big project to do that and and I just want to thank them for all their hard work.
Second. And a golf clap.
And a golf clap.
Yeah, yeah.
So anybody else have any questions or comments on the the finance situation? And I think I'll ask Madam Clerk to include the budget committee in this meeting so we can all um be on the same page. By the time we have it, maybe we'll have a little better information on what the revenue picture is gonna look like from the state. Which brings us um to announcements, comments, and discussions. Town Solicitor, um I think you have a couple of items.
Thank you, Madam President. So while we're talking about the casino, uh the Tiverton, as you know, is a named defendant in a case brought by Mr. Donald Harab claiming, who claimed that the expansion of sports betting uh in in the casinos was not approved by the voters and therefore uh illegal under Rhode Island law. That case is pending in the Superior Court. We were named as a defendant. My understanding is based, and this was pending when I before I got here, my understanding is the council basically said kind of monitor it, but don't take, participate in it because uh the state's interests and the casino's interests were aligned with the state. So they carried all the heavy water for us and they did most of the work. Anyway, the the Superior Court uh ruled that, yes, casino gambling doesn't encompass sports betting and therefore it was legally approved by the voters. Just so you know, uh that that case is now over. But we got noticed today that the Mr. Harab, through his attorneys, plan on appealing to the Rhode Island Supreme Court. So there will be more uh work on this case. I'm assuming that the council, we can talk about this at a later time. I'm assuming the 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 council probably wants to take to take uh the same approach they they did. Unfortunately, because we are named a defendant, I just can't ignore Supreme Court, you know, conference or whatever. We have to go to those things. But as far as submitting a briefs, we're probably better off unless I find something that not that the state or the casinos are not doing the job. We, I I don't think we really need to submit a brief uh if you if you guys have to pay that money. But that's up to you to decide. I'll give you that option. Uh, you don't have to decide that now. This is FYI. And finally, um, the last decision that came out from the Attorney General's Office is actually a finding of no violation by the Tiverton Board of Canvases on an uh, it's actually, it says open meeting violation, not an APRA violation, so open meeting. So so as we sit here right now, the town has no pending open APRA or OMA violations. And uh there were three filed over the last six months, and I'm happy to say that we won them all.
I have a question on those.
Go ahead, John.
Mike, how much time and energy did you put into all three of those that we ended up ultimately winning?
I I um, a lot. I mean, you know, they're they're you take them seriously. I think the uh, I I Nancy, I know Nancy had a couple of APRA requests. I forgot how many hours it added up to. But it was uh more than 30 hours, at least on a 10, 10 to 12 hours apiece on each of one, if if not more.
What does that equate to in dollars?
Well, now you're asking my legal bills. I think uh, I will have, you know, it's it's, I'm your client, so it's public record. I believe it was around, was it 12 or $13,000, Nancy? I think that's what it was.
It was about 11 altogether.
Cool. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Given, given the motive for for John Edwards' question, I'd like to know how much legal bills were spent.
Point of privilege, you can actually ask me about my motives. Or infer my.
I'd like to know how many, how much legal bills were expended in all the various complaints that were filed with the preceding town council. Thank you.
Council Driggs, that has also been a request at least back to 2018, an APRA request, and I'm working on that. If you like, I can send you the copy of the results.
Thank you. I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
I have something to say.
I'm sorry.
I think because this is a democracy, that when citizens, whoever they may be, want to do file an APRA, that it has to be respected, is they have the right to do that. So whether it be any one of us or somebody in town that wants to see what they're, what's going on, or they feel something's not right, it's just the cost of a democratic process. It it unfortunately can cost some money, but uh that's the way it goes. And people have a right to know what their government's doing.
Thank you, Donna.
Well, just to clarify, Donna, these weren't APRA requests. These were, these were complaints to the Attorney General's Office of violations of meetings. I mean, the town has never shied away from responding to APRA requests. These are, this is.
I don't, I don't think we need to go tip for tap for for OMA violations. If someone feels that there's an OMA violation, then it needs to go forward. There was plenty going on during the four of us on there, and you felt it was okay. Well, there's other things that are going on. I I really think that if people feel that there's a problem, then then they're gonna file it. And I I just don't think it's right one way or the other, one side or the other.
I I just.
It is the right.
I I I I'm I'm I don't want to get into this fray. My job is to keep sure, to ensure that this town, this town council does not violate the OMA and the APRA. Uh, and I'm proud to say that no complaints have been filed under my tenure. And I think even though I'm a pain in the neck uh about procedure and making sure our agendas are uh explicit, you know, we've we've kept out of, we've kept out of trouble, so uh that's where we are. Thanks.
Denise, did you want to say something? No, I thought I saw your hand up. Okay. Um, in that case, we'll move on to um the interim town administrator, uh resignation of Fire Chief Joseph Mallow.
I believe it's self-explanatory. We've gone through a long deliverer process and the chief resigned and I did accept it. And I think that's where it stands. At some point, we will need to go out and advertise for a uh full standing chief to represent that department. In the meantime, we've um reassigned Bruce Rymals as the interim or acting chief until such time that we uh make a recommendation to hire a new chief.
Nancy?
I have a point of order. I don't know if it's a point of order. I just have an, I I need an understanding. So if one of us has comments we want to make about the resignation that was offered, can we make them now or where are we on this process?
Well, the resignation has been made and accepted to the town administrator. I would, if you, if you have comments about it, you know, it is, it is somewhat of a personnel matter, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds. But if you have a question to the town administrator about the process, that's fine, but I don't want to get into the merits of the resignation. It it it's it's the town's position that the chief validly and gave us notice and resigned and that and that resignation was uh validly accepted, so it's final.
Oh, so in in full disclosure, I think everybody knows all the town council got a letter from Mallow and asking us not to accept his resignation. Is that an option at this point?
I don't believe it is, no. And and all personnel decisions are made by the town administrator.
Okay. All right, I just had.
Unless a hearing was requested on on his and his decision, and a hearing was not requested because he resigned.
So if any of us disagree with the resignation, if we can't speak it at this point?
Correct, because the decision to accept it or reject the resignation rests with the town administrator.
Okay, I I just, for the record, I I would not have accepted it. Thank you.
Town clerk, Nancy? Process for candidate declarations and deadline for local ballot questions.
Okay, um as most of you know, but for the public declaration of candidacy for anyone running for office for the November election, uh the papers must be turned in to the town clerk's office between June 22nd and June 24th by 4:00 PM. You can get the uh sample, you can get the form right online. Or you can just contact the clerk's office. We'll send you one. It's also on our website. So there's plenty of opportunity to get a form. And that is for any office for the November election. So that's just to let you know those dates. At that time, um, we will give you a campaign finance packet that the Board of Election has, um, wants us to distribute for them. And then you will turn in the declaration form and we will then prepare nomination papers for you to take out. Okay, and the other announcement I have is that I have received from the Secretary of State's office a form to submit any 2020 local questions. They must be certified into the state by Wednesday, August 5th. So you don't have a lot of time on this. And I just want to make sure everyone's aware, the public as well as the council, that if you want a local question to be on the ballot in November, it must be submitted to the council. And then the Board of Election certifies them and sends them to the Secretary of State's. That must be done by 4:00 PM on Wednesday, August 5th. And I have forms that they request to go on. They also have to be reviewed by the solicitor, I believe.
So we should think about getting that on as agenda items for meetings soon, right?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We don't have any executive session tonight, which brings us to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion, is there a second? Okay, uh, there's a motion to adjourn. All in favor, everybody wave your hands on the screen or say aye if you're on the phone. Aye.